Our speakers today are SMPS president Kevin Hebbeltway, FSMPS CPSM, executive free agent Hebbeltway LLC; our chief executive officer Ron Wirth, CAE, FSMPS CPSM, Society for Marketing Professional Services; and Liz Williamson, who is our project consultant with McKinley Advisors. And that said, I'm going to give it to you, Ron, to start us out.
Good afternoon, everyone, on this snowy day in Alexandria, and thank you again for joining us. This is a very exciting virtual town hall meeting, as it culminates with the completion of over a year of hard work by McKinley Advisors, the Board of Directors, and your national SMPS team. We all knew the industry and your personal career positions had changed after the devastating recession. The design and construction industry continued to change. The board took a brave and patient path by choosing to spend time this last year analyzing the changes you personally are experiencing. They chose the firm that SMPS has worked with for over a decade now, McKinley Advisors, to help with this process. You all may remember, this is the same company that helped establish the 2020 initiative for the society that has actually been our roadmap for all of us through this challenging time. I will turn this back to Kevin to walk you through the effort and some of the evolving results that are developing to help each of you plan, manage, and grow in this new environment. And thank you again for your continued belief in SMPS.
And welcome, everybody. This is Kevin Hebbeltway, your national president of SMPS, and I will echo all the welcomes that have already been said, and if I have not personally been able to see you yet this year, I look forward to seeing you at a regional conference, a chapter event, or our Build Business Conference in Orlando this summer. As Ron mentioned, this was not a light undertaking, and we're very excited to have Liz with McKinley with us today. And the first thing that we're going to do is to let her walk through some slides and literally dump this data on the table here, so we can look at it and get a feel for, so that you can get a feel for, the kinds of information that we got back from you all. Now, just as a recap, we did, starting back in April of last year, we started with a qualitative process of interviews. We did a couple of focus groups. Those of you who attended the PLS conference were a part of one of those, and we also did a couple others in various parts of the country, and just got a massive amount of valuable qualitative feedback from the membership. We then went and did the survey that many of you all are familiar with, that survey representing the quantitative data that we needed to seek for this. We've got approximately 30% response rate, I believe, and of course, we were thrilled to have that, somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,600 or 1,700 responses, and we're going to go over some of that data today. But we wanted to have this approach on the town hall today, including McKinley, so that you can really appreciate the work and the effort that went into this, and the value that SMPS places on the integrity of this process. So we went through that, and literally, we're coming up on about a year, of course, because we'll be at April here pretty soon, and so this was a process that does take time, and we wanted to make sure that we did it thoroughly, without losing the insight that we had as a basis in that 2020 plan that Ron mentioned. So after Liz presents the data and talks through what we've collected, I'll come back and help do a little interpretation and talk a little bit about the strategic ideas that the board has been working on this year, coming out of this environmental scan. Liz?
Thank you, Kevin. I'm really glad to be speaking with all of you this afternoon, and thank you for the opportunity to come and discuss the results of the SMPS environmental scan with all of you. McKinley was pleased to continue our relationship with SMPS and be part of this initiative. Your association is one that continues to strive for excellence in delivering value to you all, the members, and we are really proud to be part of that effort. As Tina mentioned, there will be an opportunity for questions after the presentation, and I will be available then for any specific research questions you may have that I can answer for you. With that, I will move into discussing a little bit about our objective for the survey and what we discovered when we analyzed the results. The e-survey, as Kevin mentioned, was just one part of the research that we conducted, and it was designed to be the most comprehensive of all the phases of research, to allow us to gather input from as many members as possible on their experiences and perceptions of SMPS, to help inform future decision-making about member benefits and services, and ways that the association can add value in the future. We conducted the survey for three weeks in August, from the last day of July to August 23rd, and as Kevin mentioned before, we did get a 30% response rate on this survey. This is among some of the highest response rates that McKinley has seen on all of our professional association research. And as you can see on the slide here, the response rate and number of total responses were very similar to the research that we conducted in 2005 that informed the 2020 plan that Ron mentioned previously. In 2005, about 45% of respondents had been members for less than two years, down to about 38% in 2012. This indicates a maturing trend among the memberships. And the figures on job role were also very similar to 2005, with the majority of members indicating that they were a marketing director, or manager, or coordinator, or marketing assistant. The numbers for primary service function also remained consistent. Again, engineering was the most common primary service function, with about 34% of survey respondents. We had also large populations represented in the respondents in construction and construction management, and architecture and landscape architecture as well. One item to note regarding the number of full-time employees, survey respondents reported for their organizations, is that we did slightly alter the response options from 2005 to 2012, but overall, we've seen an increase in the number of member firms that have more than 250 employees. That increased from 31% in 2005 to 35% in 2012. So now, we're going to move into a little bit about the industry outlook and how survey respondents are viewing the industry. Overall, respondents are optimistic about employment in the AEC industry. 98% of respondents said they expected the total headcount in their marketing and business development department to increase or remain the same. 85% of respondents reported that they were extremely or somewhat likely to be working in the AEC industry three years from now. This indicates positive feelings about the industry and a trend that we're sure you are all happy to see as well. When we asked about industry trends, respondents stated that the three trends with the greatest potential for impact are unfavorable economic climate for growth, consolidation within the industry, and the prevalence of the design-build model. I'm sure these are all major trends and issues that you're all also facing in your daily work. So almost 80% of members also reported that SMPS is helping them to address these challenges extremely or somewhat effectively, which is a great indicator for SMPS, and a number that the association will be striving to help members address these challenges even more effectively in the future. Now, we're going to move into a little bit more about membership value and overall perceptions of value that members are receiving for their membership in SMPS. Approximately 78% of members believe that the value of SMPS membership is equal to or greater than the cost. Since 2005, SMPS has shifted more members into the value is greater than the cost of dues category, which is a promising trend that the association hopes to continue. This next slide provides a comparison for how SMPS performed relative to other associations that McKinley has surveyed since 2008. So this slide here shows that SMPS falls in the middle third of the associations overall. This slide includes the data from 30 other associations that we've surveyed, and it should also be noted that this question asks about value in relation to the cost of dues, and that some of the professional associations that we have surveyed in the last few years that are included here have annual membership dues as low as $20 a year. So when you consider where SMPS is falling in that context, we think that this is a good indicator for the association. This next chart shows the order of magnitude for the value of various member benefits in terms of their impact on survey respondents' decision to renew. 98% of all survey respondents stated that networking is a factor in their decision to renew, either a major factor or a minor factor. Chapter and regional events and involvement, educational programs, and industry information and resources were all major factors for 71% to 74% of members. Some of the more national-focused events fall a little lower in their overall impact on a member's decision to renew. The next slide shows the net promoter score calculation that we conducted for SMPS. The net promoter score is a standard convention in market research, and it's not the only way that we measure loyalty or satisfaction, but it's an indicator that helps us understand who the promoters of an association are. This calculation is determined by subtracting the detractors from the promoters of an association. As you'll see here, the detractors are those who rate the association as a 0 to 6, and the promoters are those who rate it a 9 or 10. So SMPS's net promoter score is 24%. And generally, when we see numbers that are in the double digits above 10, we tend to think that that is a good indicator of both positive word of mouth and future growth for the association. This slide, similar to the member value slide comparison, shows the net promoter score for SMPS in comparison to 36 other associations that we have asked this question of. So the average net promoter score for all of these associations is about 21, and SMPS's score is a 24. So we thought this was a very good indicator for SMPS. Next, we're going to move into some more specifics about national and local chapter involvement and satisfaction. So this question here about overall satisfaction allows us to understand how members are feeling about the value that they're receiving at the local level, as well as the national level. The majority of members indicated that they are satisfied with the national level, and you'll see that about 37% of respondents were neutral on the national organization, with another 6% indicating that they were unsure. Satisfaction with local chapters decreased slightly between 2005 and 2012, from 82% to 78%. Next, we asked this question regarding level of overall awareness, to help us gauge the general awareness among members for a few key SMPS programs and services. About 62% of respondents stated that they have utilized SMPS, while another 32% report that they're aware but haven't utilized the MySMPS portal. Among these respondents, we followed up with another question and found that the majority of members were most likely to use MySMPS on a monthly basis. That was about 68% of respondents. Three in four respondents noted that they're aware of SMPS University but haven't utilized it, and about 28% of survey respondents were unaware of the domains of practice for professional services marketers. So this question indicates to us that there are some opportunities for enhanced communications and education programs for members around the benefits of the programs and services that SMPS offers. This question relates to communications, which is a challenge that we see a lot of our association clients face. We asked members if they feel that they receive email from the national and local organizations with not frequently enough, with the right frequency, or too frequently. And what we found was quite in line with what we would expect to see regarding the proliferation of email communications. About 73% of respondents feel that they get the right amount of email from the national organization, compared with 83% in 2005. And approximately 18% of respondents said that they do not get enough email from their local chapter. One other point regarding email communication that I will mention pertains to the readership of SMPS communications on mobile devices. Only about 14% of members reported reading connections or other SMPS communications on a mobile device more than 50% of the time. So these questions kind of give us an idea of the frequency which with, and the format of the communications that members are looking to receive from SMPS. So with that, I will turn it back over to Kevin to discuss the implications of this research, and how SMPS will be leveraging this information in the future.
Well, thank you so much, Liz, and as you all can see, we have a lot of statistics, and we decided not to show you every single slide. We pulled the things that we thought would have the most immediate impact, and the things we could spend some time talking about directly in terms of how we, the board, responded to all of this. And the fun part about my job now is that I only have one slide, and you're looking at it. I have called this the wheelie slide, because that's what it looks like to me, but it's a very important slide because it does several things. It references elements of the 2020 Perfect Vision Plan that came into place back in 2005, 2006. If you're not familiar with that, it is available on the MySMPS directory, and it's important to recognize that the elements of that plan specifically advocate, educate, connect, have not gone away. They're still there, and we still consider them extremely important and the appropriate framework for our strategy. We've added another big word called thrive, and we'll talk a little bit about that. The framework for thrive basically is that the society is growing up. For those of you who aren't aware, we're going to turn 40 years old in September, and for those of you who are 40 or older, that might have a certain element of recognition for you. The society is maturing, and that's a very good thing. 40 years is an incredible amount of time for an association to exist, and we believe it is thriving and will continue to in the future. And as we think about that, we have to be thinking in terms of the plan that's been in place, as well as the things we need to do for ourselves as an organization to improve. So let's talk a little bit about those elements of advocate, educate, and connect, just as a little bit of a refresher. The advocacy that we're talking about, if you read that Vision 2020 Plan, really has two essential components: educating industry leaders, and particularly the leaders of our firms, about the importance of marketing and business development, specifically to have success at the firm level. The second would be providing members of our society with the tools to advocate and advance in their careers. Those were the objectives that were set out in the original plan, and in thinking through the updates to that, we left those essentially intact. And in a moment, I'll talk about some elements of each of these that we've been thinking about this year. Under educate, this one's pretty straightforward. Our idea is that SMPS is responsible for identifying, chronicling, and promoting the knowledge, skills, and abilities that we all need for success in our marketing and business development careers. And as we do that, it's our responsibility to provide credible learning experiences for all of us, for all SMPS members and their AEC firms, in order to develop and thrive in that environment with the skill sets that are necessary to bring success to our firms. And under connect, this one's pretty self-explanatory, too. As you just saw, the networking element of SMPS is still extremely important. Not only that, it was at the top of the list. So in order to do that, we've got to find as many ways as possible that we can connect our members digitally, in person, and in all kinds of formats where the network of SMPS can provide value for your membership. We expanded on this a little bit this year, in terms of the objectives that we have under connect, and we wanted to broaden that out to make sure that we included the businesses, and the professionals, and other organizations in the built environment in that connect strategy. So we're going to continue to do that, making SMPS the core, the industry's primary source for marketing and BD expertise, and we do expect, being at that core, we do expect to serve as a central connecting point for all those other stakeholders that I mentioned, and that's a very exciting thing that will continue. So again, with advocate, educate, connect as the original framework, which we believe still serves very well for the society, with the added word of thrive there, which essentially is talking about our own internal organization development. What are the things that we need to do to remain financially stable, growth-oriented, serving the needs of our members both domestically and internationally, and all the other areas that will help us continue to grow into the future, so that at the second 40 years from now, we'll be able to look back and be appreciative of these efforts? So let's talk a little bit more in detail about some of the things that, I should say, the lenses we looked through this year as a board, and are continuing to look through as we go forward with new strategies and exciting plans for the society. I want to mention, and you'll see these other words listed under each of the highlighted ones here, so let's look at the unique value proposition. As we did our annual planning session last summer, knowing that we were in the middle of this extremely important research process, we had to marry together the data that we were getting back from McKinley, which at that time was qualitative. We had not yet completed the survey, because this was in early summer, and as you remember, the survey was completed in August. But what we did was, we spent a lot of time on the qualitative information that we received, and we reviewed that thoroughly to think about the kinds of strategies we'd like to work on going forward. So one of the first elements that came out of that effort was this concept of the unique value proposition. What really is the value of membership, and what kinds of things can we do as a society to continually increase and promote that value? The ideas include things like making sure that we are chronicling the success stories. If we're going to advocate for the profession of marketing and business development, we need to back it up with real information. So we're very focused on making sure that we are collecting those success stories of firms, and leaders, and career paths that we can point to and say, this is how it's supposed to be done, this is how it works, and here's the return from doing those activities. We also are maintaining and always growing relationships with other industry associations where we can promote and advocate for this great profession of marketing and business development, but not just with cheerleader pom-poms with no information to back it up. We've got to be able to show why it's important, and why the firms that are doing these things are having great success. So we're talking about ways that we can formalize this information, do checkups, and provide industry information for these other sister associations like AIA, ACEC, and AGC as examples, where we can offer them guidance through education, attendance at their conferences, joint programs, and many other kinds of things where we're building those relationships at the industry level that will continue to improve this advocacy that you can count on as an individual member. Other examples, of course, are tools that we developed, such as the Blueprints document, which are works in progress that can be used by individual firms and the HR departments that drive them, to help understand not just these high-level concepts, but specifically what roles, what skill sets, how do I grow the department, to help these organizations, our member firms, and industry firms have a better understanding of this functional area that we occupy. We know that if we can continue to advocate as an organization at this high level, that individual members will benefit themselves, and will have information to back them up in their own particular scenarios and in their own career growth. Now, the next one, SMPS goes to college. That was kind of a catchphrase that sort of came out of the woodwork in our planning sessions, and has become what I'll describe as the reference point for improving our education element of the strategic plan. It also, I think, goes well with this element of maturity that I've mentioned, in that we are growing up, and so if you can think about going to college as a higher level of education, taking it to the next level, that's what we're intending here. One of the key pieces of this right now is that the practice analysis, excuse me, the domains of practice that we've had in place for years is going under a practice analysis, a professional practice analysis in the very near future. Now, what does that mean? We are spending money, and time, and energy to make sure that the domains of practice of our industry are relevant and current, and represent the daily lives in our marketing and BD jobs. We do this so that that information can be credible and relevant to the industry, and of course, very applicable to each of you and your jobs each day. So that practice analysis will be underway very soon, and as you saw on the previous slide, one of my hopes is that a number far less than 28% of you will say that you are unaware of the domains of practice in the future. We can expand our educational offerings to specific audiences. We have been focused on the business development series that you're familiar with. You know about the webinars that we offer, and as we have seen, education continues to be at the top of the valuable elements of membership, and so we'll continue looking for ways to develop programs for specific target audiences. One example would be to address the issue of the growing role of the seller-doer. This is obviously not a new thing, but- But as we know right now, the seller-doer role has come back again in extreme importance. And so we're focused on providing content specifically for that role where there is a mix of technical responsibility and business development responsibility as well. Also with the SMPS Goes to College piece, we do believe that there are opportunities for SMPS as an organization to reach out into the community of higher ed and build relationships that are valuable, mutually valuable. Clearly, we know that the technical programs in our industry do not have much time to spend on business education and certainly, marketing and business development. So as we look for these relationships at the local level where chapters and members can contribute to that void and build relationships with undergraduate programs, we know that we can improve the relationships with the higher ed community, as well as sow the seeds for individuals who may be interested in our profession in the future. If we look at the next piece, Connect, and the words there are integrated communications. Liz already mentioned some opportunities for improvement in these communications, and we agree. We are always looking for ways to make the communication experience between SMPS and us, the individual members, a better experience. There is no shortage of information to share. There's too much information to share, and we're all having to gobble up so much of it anyway outside of SMPS. So we're looking for ways to explore improving these communications in a way that can provide, in an elegant fashion, the information you need right when you need it. We already mentioned that, on the email slide, that there were not many people who were viewing the information via mobile. So that is a very strong focus of ours right now. We already have, in the hopper, improvements to the MySMPS community. Those improvements are underway and will be going on over the next several months. And you should stay tuned for that specifically so that we can improve that platform for information sharing, communicating with each other, and enabling access to a wonderful set of resources that can help you every day. So the key there is to make things simple, make things streamlined, and to provide you, the individual member, with information that you need right when you need it. So if we look at that final piece, the Thrive, which is off to the side there, as we were talking about the things that were important to us this year, chapter services, which you can see as a part of the Thrive arrow, became very important. And chapter services really is kind of a moniker, if you will, for improving the consistency and the stability of our chapters, which are already very consistent and very stable. But as we think about growing into the future, we want to make sure that we have a focus on how we can do the best job at developing new chapters, growing them, and helping them mature into thriving organizations themselves. So a couple of things that are going on on that front already, actually. Underway right now, we have a task force to develop a planning toolkit, which is essentially a series of guiding tools for helping individual chapters put together their own plans and put together their own endeavors for the future, to help them maintain their stability, grow, and thrive into the future. We also are working very hard, and this relates right back to the Connect element, we're working very hard to make sure that communication between the society at large and the individual chapter is as best as it can be. And as you all know, Tina and her staff do an excellent job at this. There's so much information available, so many resources available. And oftentimes, as many resources as there are, the pipeline between that set of resources and the individual chapter just gets a little bit thin. So we're wanting to make sure that we have, at the chapter level, a new role, which is in design right now, to serve as a liaison for the chapter in terms of getting access to information, resources, and contacts at the society level that can benefit the individual members there at the chapter. Those of you who will be attending PLS will hear more about that in the near future. We are also looking to our fellows' community, very significant group of people who have achieved the highest level of recognition in our society and are tasked with giving back and serving as mentors. We're looking at that community as a source for what we're calling the Chapter Champions. These will be fellows who are assigned to chapters that are in their region or in their, chapters in which those fellows reside, that can provide senior-level guidance and expertise, again, in assisting chapters with their planning efforts, their programming efforts, all with the idea of helping the individual chapter thrive and serve its individual members. We're also looking at ways to increase the leadership training that we offer through chapters. One of the most likely places for this are the regional conferences, which are going so well right now. And we're looking at ways to continue providing leadership development, primarily for the benefit and the stability of the chapters as we're talking about right now. But clearly, leadership development is important for members as well. And oftentimes, access to this kind of personal development sometimes only comes from SMPS, depending on the programs you do or don't have available at your firm. So while we're focused on helping the chapters thrive, keep in mind that we can also relate that right back to the advocacy for the individual member and providing value in return for the membership. This has been kind of a quick summary, and we are certainly a little bit ahead of schedule. I am going to ask if Tina would come back on the line, and let's see if we've had any comments or questions that we might address at this point.
Kevin, I do have, I had one question about sharing this information with chapter leaders. I answered the question, but for those of you who are on the call and have a role within your chapters as a volunteer, we will be working with all of you with refined information, specifically for your chapters. And we will be scheduling a separate webinar and focusing it just on those chapter areas and the data that we've received. So yes, we will be sharing it in many ways that are going to be useful to our chapters in managing it. I don't have any other questions. And I'm going to remind people that if you do have any questions, this is a great time to raise your hand, and I'd be happy to unmute you, or you can certainly type in a question. But there was another comment about the connection with Educate and SMPS Goes to College. There's a lot of enthusiasm there, and that was really nice to hear. Other than that, I don't have any other questions.
Okay, well, please, if you do have a comment or a question, we have the time available, and it's kind of fun. It's like the SMPS radio show. But I will kind of aim us towards summarizing this and wrapping up here for a few seconds to give you a chance to think about anything you might like to bring up. As many of you have heard me say in person, I think it's a great time to be in SMPS. If you are a relatively new member, either because you've just recently joined or because you are relatively new to this career, I can wholeheartedly tell you that you have come to the right place and that you should fully expect for your membership in SMPS to be a significant part, if not the leading part, in your personal career development and in terms of the primary source where you can go, as we say, for the information and resources you need and connections to survive and thrive in this industry. I can also tell you, and I'd like to mention that it's been wonderful as president to see the perspective from the society as a whole and the connections that we as an organization have to other parts of the industry. Not just the connections, but literally the respect and acknowledgement of our organization as the leading source for information and expertise in marketing and business development. So again, if you're relatively new and you haven't had the perspective of that society-wide perspective that I'm describing, you should know that it's a good place to hang around. It can provide you long-term professional and personal development, as well as connections that you can leverage from around the country to benefit both you and your firm. With that said, I'll pause and see if we have any more questions.
We do, we have a few more. So let me send this one out first. The question is, can you talk a bit more about how you intend to focus on the mobile interaction? I'm finding myself interacting with the web more frequently from my mobile and would love to have easier access to SMPS resources on the fly. By the way, I really love the way Connections was revised. It's a great resource.
Well, first of all, thank you very much for that comment about Connections. For those members who've been around for a while, you know that Connections was a bit different. It packages in lots of elements into a single piece, again, in an attempt to streamline our communications. Thank you for that comment. In terms of the mobile platform, we know this is important, and we know it's huge, and we know you're all waiting. Because we are, too. We on the National Board are, happen to be a fairly adamant collection of technology-savvy people. And that, of course, is only going to increase as time goes on. The mobile platform is a very important vehicle for exchange of information. And in terms of its importance, it's really the driving importance and one of the driving factors for any element of the research and exploration we're doing for any of our communication platforms. Now, in terms of specifics, hopefully, this won't bother you too badly. I don't have anything in particular to tell you, like a launch date of the really coolest thing ever, which is probably what you were hoping to hear. But I can tell you that as a part of the MySMPS platform enhancement that I mentioned earlier, mobile devices are significantly more integrated than they currently are. I don't know, Tina, if you have anything to add to that, but if not, I would certainly say, your patience will pay off, and we are headed for the future.
We are. And on that note, we have another question that is in line with this. The question is, any plans yet for a mobile app for the Membership Directory to make the networking easier to access on the go? And I think, just as you said, internally and with all the work the Board has been doing, we're working on a new platform that's going to allow us opportunities that we simply didn't have with where we are right now.
Thank you, Tina. And for any of you who may not have been at National Conference last year, I did a little bit onstage where I had a beta version. Okay, it really wasn't a beta version. It was all planned. But my vision for it is to do exactly what the question asked, which was provide relevant, timely information about the membership for members where and when you need it. And to do that, my vision for it is not to have to go back to the office and log in to some website. I would prefer to have that with me in my hand and for that information to be relevant at the time that I need it, when I need it, presented in a clean, elegant fashion. And that vision has not changed. So I can tell you, even after my term is over, that will continue to be the direction we're going.
Great. I have a question on another topic. And it's, do you foresee the CPSM certification becoming an accepted and respected designation outside of SMPS? Many folks in our industry don't know what it means or understand its value.
Boy, I could not have gotten a better question than that. Thank you so much. The reason I'm very excited about it is not just because my answer is yes. I fully expect for that certification to gain more recognition and more respect in the future. But I just wrote a piece on it last night, which will come out in Connections this week. Actually, I didn't write too much. I actually got to do an interview with a fellow member. And I won't spoil too much for you. I'll let you receive that in Connections next week. But I will tell you that this one-member story gives very specific examples and answers to the kinds of questions that are being asked here today. Now, can I promise you that everybody in the industry will have the same kind of recognition and attention towards CPSM? Well, certainly not. But I can tell you, based on the question that you asked, that yes, it will grow, and it will continue to be more recognized. And if I might, Ron, if you're still on the line, if you could make a couple of comments just from the perspective of the respect that the certification has already garnered from sister associations and organizations we've worked with through education?
Well, one quick example is with SAMI. Society of Military Engineers chose us as an education partner, and we're working with them on educational programming at the various venues around the country in large part, and really a primary part, because of our certification program. They wanted to find an association that had certification, that has that leading, ongoing educational bent within their own environment, because that was something they felt strong about. So that's one example. Just came back from another meeting with Associated General Contractors, and certification and various venues within, especially the public sector, is becoming a highly growing field within the endeavor. And I think business development and marketing are still relatively an unknown area of the marketplace, but having that certification designation is helping to segment and differentiate those individuals. At the same time, it's providing, and I'm finding this myself around the country, people are getting more money from this, from employers, from headhunters in turn, are looking for that designation for placement of people. And when we get calls from headhunters, that's the first thing they want, because they know they can get more money and because that's what new owners want in today's marketplace. And members are getting promotions in today's marketplace in large part because of that designation. They're being accepted by their credentialed peers that they work with. We work in a credentialed environment. And having that certification and knowing that you're being tested on a regular basis and maintaining those credentials helps you to gain and garner that respect that we have heard about forever within the society. But certification is helping bridge that gap. And I think what Kevin mentioned and alluded to with this new practice analysis is really helping step that up a whole notch as we upgrade and all of our publications and all of our works that are out there to meet tomorrow for you, for all of the CPSMs, and for our industry.
Thank you, Ron. So my answer to the question is absolutely.
Yes.
And if you are considering certification, look locally at your chapter level for study group opportunities. And if one doesn't exist, maybe there's a good opportunity for you to start one there. Anything, Tina?
I do have another question, yes. Will National become more involved in experiencing the regional conferences as a middle point between local and the national conference, which is not well-attended as in the past?
Okay, I will answer that question to the best of my ability as I heard it. Will National get more involved? For those who don't know, the regional conferences have grown up on their own. They formed at the grassroots level, and chapters have come together in the various regions of the country and put these things together, which has been totally awesome and great. Access to resources for those a little closer to home, perhaps, and in many cases, for those who can't make it to our annual convention. In terms of how we are involved or how we might continue to be involved, generally speaking, we look at the regional conferences as great opportunities to get out in the field and visit with you all. When I say "we," I mean the staff and the Board of Directors in a very efficient and extremely, that's a good way to do it. We get out there, we see multiple chapters, we get to interact with you all, and we get to support those efforts that you're doing locally. We are involved in a sponsoring kind of way, and that's very consistent across all the regionals. And as a part of that, as you- regionals, and as a part of that, as you heard me mention earlier, we look at it as a great opportunity to help the regional conferences expand their programming and actually have leadership development as a part of that. So, typically, at the beginning of each of those regionals, as most of you know, for a two- to three-hour period, usually on the first day, we bring staff members and board members to come in and facilitate leadership development, chapter leadership development. In terms of how those conferences fit into the big picture, yes, I personally do believe that the regionals provide great value in terms of high-level programming, networking, and connections at that regional level. I also believe that the annual convention still provides incredibly high value for very senior-level topics as well as a great lineup of educational elements for those in any part of your career. As a matter of fact, I'm going to, since I have the platform, I'll do a little bit of a pitch for the conference here, but hopefully it's relevant to your question. If you have not yet taken a look at the lineup of sessions for Build Business this summer, I would encourage you to do so, especially if you have not yet registered, and really look at how we've tracked things out. What we thought would be helpful this year and really important was to track out things in a couple of ways, most importantly, for the level of experience that you have or tenure in the industry, if you will. So, we've got different tracks based on, you know, one to five years, six to 10 years, three or four different clear areas where we've placed this material, and you can make a decision about whether the convention has the right elements for you. I hope to see you there, and I do believe that there is still a very relevant place for both regional conferences and the annual conference in the overall offering that's available from S&amp;P S.
Okay, I have one other question. We have five more minutes left, and I'm going to summarize. What is the role of the foundation, S&amp;P S Foundation, in all of this?
Great question, and unfortunately, five minutes isn't enough to tell you everything that's going on there, but I strongly encourage those of you who are interested in learning more about the foundation and understanding the connection to ask more questions, either of me, our staff, or people at your local chapter who know about the foundation. Very, very high-level summary. The foundation is a separate organization whose purpose is to do original research and information gathering for our profession. If you've been around a little while, you know about the White Paper series that has been done many of the years in the past, and the current efforts right now are producing a book on the future of business development. The role of the foundation in the kinds of things we've been talking about today has a lot of exciting possibilities, especially in the areas of research and personally, I would say, in the areas of the chronicling of the information that we discussed earlier. It so happens, and since we don't have a representative from the foundation on the call today, I'll do my best at describing what they're currently doing, which is looking very closely, as we, the National Board, have done, at the overall purpose, mission, and vision of the organization, and they've been doing so very thoroughly and have some exciting things planned. And in terms of the connection with the strategies that we've discussed today, again, I would point back to the research component of that, and there is information available at snpssfoundation.org. And again, if, since we're kind of short on time today, I would invite any inquiries about that relationship for further discussion afterwards.
That's great. That's it for the questions, Kevin.
Excellent. Well, I will close things up with a big hearty thank you for attending today. I know that you took an hour out of your schedule to be with us live and in person, and that really means a lot. I hope that you will continue to stay connected as a member, and if you're looking for ways to increase that, as you have seen, the local chapter level is the best place to start. Join a committee, get involved, do things that are relevant to your particular job, and see what S&amp;P S can do for you and with you as a member. I look forward to seeing you sometime soon, and Tina, I'll close it, I'll turn it over to you to close it out.
Well, thank you, everyone, for attending. This ends our session. Have a great afternoon.